All right, the time is seven o'clock PM. I call to order this meeting of the Perry Township Board of Trustees for June ninth of January ninth, I'm sorry, the eighth of 2021. Charity, will you take role?
Trustee Wen.
Yeah.
Trustee Hartshorn.
Here.
Trustee Mears.
Yes.
Jason, do you have a picture of the flag that we can use? Alrighty. All right, let me do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I get a motion to accept the minutes? Looks like we've had so many meetings. From March 30th all the way through May 25th. So that includes a special meeting March 30th, our working session April 13th, a special meeting April 20th, or April 13th, a special meeting on the 16th, a special meeting April 23rd, special meeting April 27th, special meeting May 11th, special meeting May 27th, and a special meeting on May 25th of 2021. Quite a few of these minutes needed re-typed, edited, or corrected, so they are just now being approved for the first time. Would one of you guys like to make a motion to accept those?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, I'll set it.
Trustee Wen.
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn.
Yes.
Trustee Mears.
Yes.
We have some bills that were paid through the time period of May 1st through May 31st.
That was part of the consent agenda.
Is that, that's what I was wondering, so that...
There was an update to the agenda, you might not have most current copy. That's why I worded it that way.
Okay, so that has also been approved then as part of the consent agenda. So, moving into individual reports, fiscal officer Grill.
Okay, so since the last meeting, I've been working with the traveling clerk Pranger. We've reconstituted the accounting system and reconciled the accounts through May 31st of 2021, which was an odd me to be able to provide the cash summary by fund and the payment listing for you guys this evening. We're still working to reestablish access to a few of the accounts. Have gotten a lot of access granted, but still have a few that's kind of lingering. I've been in discussions with regards to potential fire levy with Mr. Hartlob and Glenn Madden with New Labden. There's been one public records request received. We also need to look and decide, due to the transition between the previous fiscal officer leaving and my coming in, some bills kind of got waylaid, and it has resulted in us incurring some late fees. I have reached out to all of them to see about the potential, given the situation of getting the late fees waived at this time, but I'm still waiting to hear back from them. So I'm not sure what we want to do. Right now, we're looking at about $500 that we've incurred in late fees.
Unfortunately, I think because we were denied access to some of those bills and some of those accounts, we may have no choice but to pay those and just move forward from there.
I'll need to know where I need to pay those out of, what appropriation accounts those need to be paid from.
I would assume out of the funds, whichever bills they are, whatever fund the bill is paid out of, it depends on what the individual bill is for.
Well, the ones that we've incurred late fees are on, are on the credit cards and on the Oprah's so far. So those are ones that kind of hit across the board.
Okay, well, the police department has a credit card. The Road and Cemetery Crew had a credit card. I believe General Fund had a credit card. So, we may just need to divide that among the three funds and eat the fees. It is an unfortunate situation. If they're allowed, well, will us, if they'll weigh those fees, that's phenomenal and great. If they're not willing to weigh those fees, because most of them aren't very lenient on it, it's just one more thing we're going to have to chalk up to our previous fiscal officer kind of leaving behind and doing or not doing.
Charity, can you reach out to them maybe tomorrow and ask them, you know, and see if you can get response by tomorrow? And if not...
Yeah, I'll see what I can do. The biggest one is just, is the fleet card, that's the biggest one.
I think the Oprah's one, they should certainly understand being a state organization. We may not have that one.
We just received today the one from them assessing us with the fees. And I know there's going to be a few more coming with regards to payroll concerns.
Okay. Yeah, I think because we didn't have our banking information, because there were accounts that we thought we had that we didn't, and miscellaneous other confusions on things, we're going to find a lot of discrepancies, I think probably this month, next month. It's going to take us some time to catch up on things. And, you know, we just ask that people understand and be patient that some of these expenditures that have to go out are necessary based on things that were done in the past that we're trying to fix.
Okay, once I have an answer, I'll reach out individually to each one of you trustees and kind of go from there.
Okay, my email on my phone is not working, so it can be an email, and I don't respond right away. Text me and let me know it's there, and I'll find a computer somewhere.
Okay, and then I just have one other thing that we need to also look at. It was back on April 22nd, there was a new shredder purchased through the police department, but for the office out front. And I needed to know, Chief Littleton submitted it to me, showed that it was paid by the credit card and had requested that it be divided amongst the different departments.
Yes, we should divide that because it was an unfortunate purchase that we had to buy because our last shredder was destroyed. But all of us used the shredder in the general office as well as the police department. Chief Littleton just happened to be available to get one right away and get it to us. So that should be divided amongst everybody's funds to get that paid for.
That's all that I had.
Okay, Road and Cemetery. Do we have Randy tonight?
No.
No, okay. Yeah, so we're kind of in a transition with the Road and Cemetery. We can post a report if we get it. Do we have any information on where we stand with things?
Well, I've been talking to Mr. Steffi, and he has agreed to stay on at the Road Department. So he's gone, he's been mowing, he's mowed the administration building down at the garage, emptying trash. You know, driving around, he's just kind of basically handling everything. Dale's been going down, answering the recorder, returning messages. There's been several calls regarding footers, grave lights, things like that. And I know we do have an upcoming burial, the 16th, so he'll be helping with that.
Okay, and I've been helping a little bit when I can, and I've made myself available to help. I got to help with our digging a grave and was felt very honored to be able to contribute to do that. And I got to drive the dump truck, and that was fun. I was loving that. So, you know, I will try to keep myself as available as I can be to help out where I can with any of that. Okay, moving on to our police department report.
Yes, for the police department, start out with our May stats are published to the website. So get on there and look at the things that we've done throughout the month of May. Fishing derby scheduled for Sunday, August the 22nd, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM up here at the Sycamore State Park. Officer Brian Douglas is heading that event, and he's will be publishing more information and reaching out to local businesses for donations, for prizes, and everything that he needs for that event. The next thing I want to bring up, Sergeant Hustler may be on as well. I've asked him to be on tonight. We've been looking at bringing or switching over to body worn cameras. Seems to be something that every agency is switching over to for a variety of reasons. But he has done some research into this, and I emailed all the trustees a copy of the quotes and the breakdowns. And I just asked that he kind of go over with, go over all of this, since he did the research and can speak a little bit more on that.
Good evening. Okay, so I went through several vendors. We currently use WatchGuard, which is now owned by Motorola. So I looked at WatchGuard, I looked at Axon, formerly known as Taser, and just, it's a company out of Pennsylvania. It's a bunch of guys that basically made some little body cameras. They're trying to get in the market. So I, if you, on the front page of the packet that Chief Littleton emailed you, you'll see there's a Sentinel, a V300, a Body 3, a 4RE, and a Fleet 3. So the Sentinel is the standalone body worn camera. It is kind of like what you'd be able to buy off of Amazon. You would have to do onsite storage, we'd have to do additional software purchases for that for support in the backend and do redaction when necessary. It is not, it doesn't integrate with any other platforms, strictly standalone version. New Lebanon runs a similar system, it was generated by some police officers. Now, they're apparently running some issues here and there with the software not functioning properly. But the price on those to get, where do we go here? For those with everything that needs to be purchased, it'd be about $38.80, and $38.88. So if you look over the next column, the V300, so the difference is the V300 and the Body 3 are the different companies between WatchGuard's V300 and Axon's the Body 3. Just like when the next column is the 4RE is WatchGuard, the Fleet 3 is Axon. So the V300 and the 4RE work together. They, everything is automatic sync, everything is a wireless upload. Once the canopy is set up around the police department, when the prosecutor calls or somebody calls for a public records request, the prosecutor needs something, all we do is send them a link to the cloud file that is automatically sent to prosecutor, the video redaction software, and I'll be back in support for both the Axon and the WatchGuard system. All the software is included, there's no purchasing other software packages or anything like that. Axon for the Body 3 and the Fleet 3, they don't have an unlimited video for the body. For the Fleet 3, it's unlimited, but for the body, it's a limited amount of server storage. If not, you have to, once you go over that, you start paying for an à la carte system. The WatchGuard for both the in-car camera, which is the 4RE and the V300, is unlimited. So, anything that we need is always stored, and it doesn't go away. They also have the software built in for public records, where we set the public records retention schedule. It automatically purges all those records once they're done, so that's one less thing that we have to do. Everything is included in these, from the wireless transfer systems to the body cameras, to the mounts, to the in-car cameras. And it's really a nice system. The, both the 4RE and the Fleet 3 now have integrated license plate readers as well. So everything goes from our body camera to the in-car system up to the cloud. And with the, having the license plate reader, it also gives us the ability to check for stolons, warrants, and things like that. They tie into different systems, it's already part of the Flock system. Both systems can access the Flock system and upload data to them when needed. Basically, what it boils down to is right now to me is price, because you have the Sentinel, like I say, is the kind of your entry level, what you can buy off of Amazon. The V300 and the 4RE system for the WatchGuard and Axon, they're very comparable systems. Just the, the total cost is for Axon, it is $110,815.29. That is for a five-year contract. The WatchGuard is $45,360 for the five-year contract with both. So what it boils down to is these companies are no longer doing like we used to, where we bought the system. You had it, and you just used it until it died. The new platforms for both Motorola for WatchGuard and for Axon is, throughout the contract, at the end of the five years, or when they release new things, they, it's called a technology refresh. So we get brand-new cameras. So we're no longer stuck with the five-year prior model. We actually will get new cameras. So it's a technology leap to where the paying by, it's like an à la carte pay-as-you-go service instead of buying hardware and then keeping the things running, keeping them up to date. It's all built in, and it's all refreshed automatically. Basically, what it boils down to me is price. So instead of paying to install new equipment, to switch to the Sentinel or to another system, if you pay the $45,360, that's a five-year contract, which is $9,072 a year. That gives us four in-car cameras, four body cameras, all the backend software, all the unlimited storage server space that we need, and all the redaction software, so you don't tie up an officer up doing redaction, it's an automatic redaction process. So that's a lot of information, kind of get thrown at you at once. What, any, any questions?
We know anybody in the area, Sergeant Hustler, that has these?
Well, we actually currently have the 4RE in our cruisers right now. That's what we've been, we've been using those for a while, so we know they're kind of tried and true. The Montgomery County Sheriff's Office just, or they're in the process of switching from the Panasonic arbitrator to the WatchGuard 4RE system and the V300 body cameras. They did, they did the same thing that we're looking at doing, it's, that's a bundle quote. The city of Dayton just went with Axon, so they're both around here. The video quality on both is impeccable, so we know they're tried and true.
And do you have money in the budget, Chief Littleton?
That is something that I just spoke with Charity this evening about sitting down and revisiting the, the budget and everything. So to give you a definite answer one way or the other, as I said, right now, I couldn't answer that for you. But that's something that I hope to get accomplished here with Charity over the next several days.
So I'm going to suggest, Chief, after you sit down with Charity and see just what the finances are, if you could let us know, you know I'm in favor of body cameras, but I am concerned about the budget. There's been a lot of questions and red flags, as you well know, so that's going to be the big hangup. It might need to wait until next year. And I hate to put it off, because I think this is something super important for you guys. So we'll just have to look at it and see what we can come up with.
Oh, no, absolutely. You know, the budget's going to play a major factor in this decision, obviously. But, you know, Sergeant Hustler's been doing the research on this now for several months, and we've been kicking things back and forth. And so I just wanted to bring this up as a conversation starter and, you know, see where it ultimately ends us. And hopefully, we can equip our officers with the body cams and, you know, get the system in the car and everything else, so.
Has there been any more thought given to leaving Regional Dispatch and switching to Inglewood Dispatch? And if so, could that money be applied towards body cameras?
Well, I know Sergeant Hustler has also reached out to Sergeant Lang over in Inglewood, and he takes care of all the dispatching, from my understanding. We're working on getting hard numbers put on paper so we can look at and bring to the trustees. But that is something that we are still actively pursuing. I want to, you know, I want to gather the cost of, how much it's going to cost for the transition. You know, that means reprogramming our radios. That's going to be changing the IP systems to talk with Inglewood Dispatch versus Montgomery County. And then, you know, what does Inglewood charge per dispatch? You know, is there any onboarding fees? If so, what are those? So there's some things to compare and everything just prior to switching. You know, the good news is, you know, there's no reason to purchase brand-new radios, both portable or in-car. It's just changing the, the way that communicates from Inglewood or from Montgomery County Regional Dispatch Center over to Inglewood Dispatch Center. So I think that cost would be significantly less. But I just want to get all those numbers put together before I bring it back to the board.
Well, thank you. I look forward to hearing what comes of that, because I'm a big fan of body cameras, and I'd like to see if we can make that happen.
Yes, ma'am. And then, the only other thing I have is I'd like to go into executive session pursuant to the Ohio Revice Code 121.22G1, compensation of a public employee.
Okay, well, I'll make that motion based on Chief Littleton's request that we go into executive session.
I'll second it. Charity.
Charity, you're still muted.
She just hollered over and said something wasn't working. I wasn't quite sure what she had stated. She said she can't get it off of mute.
Oh, it's off mute now.
There we go. Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Wen?
Yes.
Trustee Mears?
Yes. Yay, technology.
All right, everybody's going to be put into the waiting room until the executive session is completed. Stand by. Everybody's back in.
Welcome back, everybody. This time, I'll make a motion that we return to regular session.
Seconded.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Wen?
Yes.
Trustee Mears?
Missy, did you say yes?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So, Chief Littleton, do you want to pick up where we left off then?
Yes, I asked that the board pass a resolution with increasing Officer Stephen Payne's pay from $17 to $18 an hour with an effective date of May 31st.
Just a point of order, we don't need a resolution, we can make a motion to do that. So I'm going to make a motion that we change Officer Payne's rate of pay to $18 an hour effective May 31st.
Second.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Wen?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Thank you, and that's all that I have.
Then we'll move on to our department, Ms. Kaler.
Hi, everyone. On the trash, I'll be sending out the third quarter trash bills at the end of the month. And as of today, there's still 248 residences that have not paid their second quarter trash bills. On zoning, since the last meeting of May 11th, I have sent out 13 courtesy notifications for properties to be mowed. I checked on these properties yesterday, and all but six have been mowed. And I will be moving forward to notify the six property owners with a second courtesy notice that will explain the charges for Perry Township to mow those properties at the owner's expenses. And these letters will go out on Thursday, June 10th. I'm also working on six nuisance abatements that will be, will be setting up abatement hearings with the trustees on these cases in the near future. And I have issued five permits since the last meeting, and that's all I have.
So we'll move into our trustee reports. In my report, I want to start with a thank you to everybody that showed up, answered the request to help a Perry Township resident who asked for help. It was actually a fun day. We had a couple people show up. Thank you to Doug Crow for organizing it, and thank you to State Representative Preach for bringing out the big lawn tools and mowing things like kind of the industrial way. It was a big job, and everybody pitched in, and that's what I like to see. And that's what I want people to know, Perry Township does step up for each other. So thank you again to those who did that. I've had an open line of communication with the OTA, I've been speaking. I've had an open line of communication with the OTA. I've been speaking to Heidi pretty regularly, keeping her up to date about what's going on. They have been having online classes and online seminars once a month. Actually, a couple of them have been extra in the month. And I've tried to attend almost all of them, if not all of them, in each month. So I hope to be able to bring that knowledge to the township, and there's been some really good information that I've learned from them. And as I mentioned earlier, I spent some time helping our road and cemetery crew. Learned an awful lot that I didn't even know about when it comes to roads and when it comes to drainage and water tiles and things. A lot of new knowledge that I will keep with me for a very long time. And, um, and I went to own a dump truck, but that's another story. So, um, that's pretty much all I've got for my report. So, um, I did also, I've been meeting with James Metz from the Regional Planning Committee, and we've been talking about the retreat program. If there is anybody in the township that lost trees during the tornado, please, please, please take advantage of this program. There will be trees provided to replace the ones that were lost. There will be volunteers needed to help plant said trees. So if you didn't lose trees but would like to volunteer to plant them, excuse me, by all means, you know, speak up. The information's been on Facebook. We have the information at the township office. Jason, is that on our website also?
It's on the Facebook page. I did not put it on the website yet, so I can do that.
Okay, um, there is going to potentially be a booth at the Brookville Community Picnic. City of Brookville is also participating in the retreat program, so I've been in communication with Sonia about maybe us doing it with them because we're really gonna probably end up pulling from the same volunteer pool. And so if we do it on the same day and can work together on this, that would be great. So I'm hoping we can have some information at the community picnic. And anybody who is out there from the township will also have some flyers with the contact information on how to get a tree. And, yeah, Rumkey, thank you to everybody for your patience if your trash was not picked up yesterday or until very late today. I too was in that boat, so they've been very short-staffed, and while that's not an excuse, it is a reason. They brought in people from outside of our area to help make up for it today. So please have some patience. They're doing the best that they can, given a limited number of people to do it with. That's all that I have for my report.
Good evening. So I've continued to update the website, Facebook pages, and uploading documents as required. I've also been investigating the cost of information technology improvements for the township. I will have two motions during new business to bring up. I've met with two companies regarding installing a conference room camera and microphones in the meeting room so that we can have a, uh, a true system for recording meetings and whatnot to support township. I plan on having those in hand for discussion during the June twenty-second working session or the next following meeting after that, if we don't have the working session. I have been in talks with two different web developers and general IT consultants. Both come highly recommended regarding bringing them in to actually manage to develop host and develop content for Perry Township. The plan initially was for me to do the website and the social media for two years, figure out what we needed, and then bring someone in. Over the last year and a half, it's been very time-consuming, which I don't mind, but it makes my hours, my percentage of time work very lopsided to where it can only go in the general fund, and that's not good. So looking to try to evolve this a little bit and see if we can have someone else do it. So I'm supposed to have the two proposals from those companies by the end of the month, and those will be ready to be discussed at our next Board of Trustees meeting. Let's see. Township grants, okay. So I've sent information out to Karen for, uh, heard a shotgun out to the other trustees and the fiscal officer regarding the OPWC application development agreements that have been proposed by Kramer &amp; Associates. We can discuss this more during new business. I just wanted to mention that we do have the, the proposals for development of the applications, not for the work, but for the application development in hand to review. We also have the CDBG application deadline approaching July second of this year. And that's what we previously used for the ramps. I've been in talks with Tawana Jones up at the county, and an idea that I had wasn't gonna work because the property at the maintenance garage isn't in one of the affected areas where that would be applicable. So we'll have to discuss that also during new business to see what our thoughts are on if we wanna do something like that this year. Uh, I continued my weekly driving inspections of the township roads, cemeteries, and investigating nuisance properties for zoning, and I also was able to collect flags at Everstol Cemetery after Memorial Day. That's all I have.
Okay, uh, let's see. I put flags up at Everstol Cemetery, and I also attended the ceremony for Memorial Day at the Piermont Cemetery. And I'd also like to thank Brookville Flower Shop for donating the arrangements for the veteran stone at the cemetery. I have been in contact and on several phone calls with Montgomery County regarding a few properties. Also, again, thank you to Mr. Steffi for staying on and helping with the road crew and attending. I've had a few meetings with Ms. Kaler regarding the BZA. That's all I got.
You're muted, Mindy.
That didn't unmute. Am I, I'm unmuted?
There you go.
Okay, I hit my spacebar. I didn't agree. All right, moving on to new business. I have a couple things that I'm gonna throw out real quick. We do have interviews underway for our crew for the road and cemetery. And I think, Missy, did you wanna?
Yeah, um, if it's okay with everybody, and I apologize. I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session again, 121.22G1, consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee, and this is for employment.
Seconded.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Wen?
Yes.
All right, please stand by. I'll be putting everyone in the waiting room until the executive session is completed. All right, everybody's back in.
So did we, no, I'm sorry, make a motion that we return to regular session?
I'll second.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Wen?
Yes.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Okay, so then as far as, um, do we do, that was kind of old business before new business, but, um, I did have one other thing on new business. So recently, we have done a lot of updating on personnel as far as cemetery care, and we're getting new staff in. And everyone is familiar with hiring Douglas Property Management to take care of the mowing and the trimming and such. This past Memorial Day was incredibly busy out at our four active cemeteries, and there were a lot of decorations left. So we have two dates, I believe March and October, that the cemetery has stated that those decorations will be cleaned up and disposed of if they are left behind. They, those are posted. That being said, if there are decorations out at the cemetery that are not physically sitting on the base of the stone or on the stone, they make it very difficult to mow and more difficult to trim. So if anybody, and Marilyn, I'll ask you to take notes on this and maybe share it in the star. If anybody has any decorations that they want preserved at their loved ones' memorial site, at their cemetery grave site, please make sure that they are physically on the stone, that they are not sitting in the grass next to the stone, that they are physically on the stone. Also, a request has been made to not use the shepherd hooks for hanging planters because those do break the string for the weed whackers. So I'm gonna leave that at the discretion of people, but if, um, we're gonna give it a month, and when the property management people that we've hired go back out to next mow and trim, this was just done, so there is some time. If they go back out and there are flowers on the grass or in the grass, they may be removed. So it's very important that we abide by the rules. Everybody who buys a plot should be getting those instructions when they purchase their plot. If there is an Ohio Revised Code governing how the cemeteries need to be maintained, and so we need to stick with that, and we need to make sure those policies are being upheld. So just that reminder that if you have flowers, please make sure they are physically sitting on the stone, or they will be removed. So.
I do have two new business motions I'd like to make. First, I'd like to make a motion that we purchase a one-year license for the township Zoom Government to record meetings and allow for the facilitation of meetings, both in person as well as broadcast to residents that are unable to attend. And that cost is one hundred and forty-nine dollars and ninety cents.
I second.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Wen?
Yes.
And I'd also like to make a motion to purchase a new Wi-Fi router with a four-year warranty plan for the road and maintenance garage for township use at a cost of one hundred and fifty-four dollars, ninety-eight cents.
Second.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Wen?
Yes.
Um, do we wanna get into the grant talk now under new business? Okay.
We can.
So, uh, we received a email from Kramer &amp; Associates, who has handled the township's applications for the Ohio Public Works Commission, uh, grant money to do various roadwork, road widening, drainage, et cetera. They have reached out to us with proposals to develop and submit the application for work on Stack Road and work on part, I believe it's the eastern part of Providence Pike. We've discussed this work previously, but we have not entered into an agreement with Kramer &amp; Associates to basically build those applications and submit them on our behalf. Are we in favor of continuing that work with Kramer &amp; Associates and having them pursue that submission for us?
We've got nothing to lose, right?
Right.
Sure.
Yeah, we've worked, we've always worked with them, so, yeah.
All right, then I will make a motion that we agree to and sign the application development agreement submitted by Kramer &amp; Associates for them to submit applications on Perry Township's behalf to the Ohio Public Works Commission for this year, twenty-twenty-one.
Second.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Wen?
Yes.
The CDBG application deadline is July second this year. Is there anything that we wanted to look at as a township this year for that money? Previously, we did the ramps. It took a little while, but we got it done. Actually, I saw there was something from Kramer &amp; Associates with Double J submitting their final, uh, invoice post walkthrough. I had an idea of doing something at the maintenance garage property, but because it's not in the properly designated area within the township per the census data that they use to decide that, I just wanted to see if anybody had any ideas from the trustees on, uh, should we pursue that this year or not?
What are the limitations of that? Like, can we use it for anything like a cleanup? Or does it need to be for something physical in construction or?
No, here, I will, I'm gonna put the, the Word document up here for everyone to see. Does have a lot of information. So as you can see, they define eligible applicants and eligible activities for the scope of those grants.
Would, would rehabilitation and preservation activities include the cleanup of some of those buildings in Piermont?
I am not sure. Basically, the, the idea that I had, I was told that the only applicable area would be down towards the southeast corner of the township, towards the New Lebanon, was the applicable area. It, it has to do with the median income and some per capita numbers. I think it's in here.
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one percent?
Yeah.
Yeah. There it is. Principally benefiting low to moderate income persons, at least fifty-one percent. Eliminating, well, here you go, eliminating or preventing slums and blight. That might be applicable if you're talking about the Piermont area. Or even, we, we can run that by Tawana and see if, if my idea was constrained by the locality that I was talking to, or if we could address things with blighted, blighted properties in the township, like the one in Little Richmond that we've had for years that we have to continue to take care of with no money ever coming out of it. So I can reach out to Tawana and ask about that.
What about on that preservation? Is that something that we could possibly use on the archway?
Uh, well, we were at the point where we, we weren't gonna be talking about the preservation of the archway. We're gonna be talking about the removal, removal of the archway because it's unable to be preserved in its current state. So maybe that is something that we look at for next year because we're gonna have to run numbers and figure out what we would wanna do with that, maybe get some ideas from different, I don't know, residents or companies for how to design something like that. Because I know that Randy had said that, you know, the fencing at Piermont, not Piermont, Pleasant Hill. for how to design something like that, because I know that Randy had said that, you know, the fencing at Piermont, not Piermont, Pleasant Hill. The fencing at Pleasant Hill had to go, the archway had to go. So, I would probably recommend, rather than trying to get something in under the bar here by July 2nd, that we chalk this up for the end of this year to start planning for next year's CDBG grant and make sure that that would be something that's applicable. So, I will, I will get with Ms. Jones and ask her about the cemetery arch and blight properties. And see if there's any, if this would be applicable. The other thing, I guess, well, that's more old business. So, are we in agreement that this probably requires more planning than we can do by July 2nd, and we should tee it up for next year?
Unless we can come up with a quick project. I know we've got a lot of requests. I know our hands are tied on the old Hicks property, the general store area, but cleaning up that block and cleaning up that area. If there's anything we can do towards that that we can throw together by July 2nd, that might be a consideration.
So, I will get with Ms. Jones, and I will ask her about the blighted properties, if that's applicable, and if we could do that for this year. If so, we'll figure it out and we'll get that submitted.
If we do it this year, will it jeopardize us doing it again next year?
No. No, they have a pot of money from the state every year that goes into these improvements and fixing blighted areas, so it wouldn't affect this year to year. But then for the cemetery, I think the cemetery would definitely take more planning than just by July 2nd this year, so we could tee that up for next year.
And don't the cemeteries also have other grants as well?
Well, we have a grant right now in hand for $1,000 to paint the arch, and we've since found out that it's it needs to be removed for safety reasons, severe safety reasons. And we're actually gonna have to look into, I'm gonna have to get with charity on that and basically look into returning that money because we weren't able to get the work done once we started assessing what needed to be done and found out it was unsavable, so.
Is it specific to painting the arch? We can't use it for fencing?
I submitted it specifically for that. I had to provide pictures and write-ups and all sorts of stuff for that arch. What I can do is when I reach out to them with, and I'll CC Ms. Grill on it, I'll see if we can use that for anything else, the removal of the fences. I think we're kind of limited in what we could do at that cemetery right now anyhow because we're basically looking at cleaning up stuff, you know, issues with the dead trees, issues with the fences, and the issues with the arch. So, I'll report back next month at the Board of Trustees meeting as to the status of all of that and how we're gonna have to execute that in the next month, so. That is all the new business that I had.
As everyone knows, we had at our last, we had a special meeting where we advertised for our road superintendent. And at that time, during the interviews, we offered the position of the road superintendent for the cemetery and roads. And we offered that position to Mr. Caleb Hoops. And at this time, Mr. Hoops has accepted the position. So, Mr. Hoops will be starting the week of July 5th. So, welcome to Perry Township, Mr. Hoops.
Anything else in new business? Moving right along to old business. And I know we've covered a bit of this already. We're kind of all over the place. But on old business, I just wanted to update folks that we met again regarding the upcoming fire levy. There will be a levy on our ballot, and we're still working out some of the details of that levy. But cost of equipment, cost of operations, fire service in general to come into Perry Township has gotten very expensive. So, bottom line is unfortunately, if we want ambulances and we want fire engines, we need to pass a levy to make that happen. We met last Saturday, this past Saturday, to work on our policies and procedures update. As many are aware, we've been trying to update the books and bring everything up to speed. And we are pretty much well on the way, I think, if not complete, I think charity's checking into a few things on our records retention policy. We did emphasize that historical documents will be potentially preserved. And Jason, were you gonna get with Wright State and look into that, or we're waiting to see what's there to preserve?
Yeah, we'll be getting with Wright State on that. The first thing is, we have to have the updated RC2 on file with the State Archives. The other thing is, is that we also need to look into the climate and humidity management in our storage area, which I don't believe it has that. It is covered by the heat in the building, but not in the room. So, that's another thing we're gonna have to do here in the near future, and that'll probably align with the assessment of what's in that room, and if things fall outside of the retention policy, that we'll be approving here in the near future.
Also, on old business, once again, the Retreat Program. I covered that already early on, but if anybody has lost trees, again, gonna reemphasize. It's on our Facebook page. Look for the information. And I think as far as old business, that was all that I had.
What was that?
Did you have any old business to revisit?
Not, no.
No.
Nope. Okay. Are there any visitors this evening that have any questions, comments, statements, curiosities?
Mr. Warble has raised his hand.
Yeah, I've got a question. It might be for Chief Littleton, if he's still available. The last, the last meeting talked about, I'm not real tech savvy here, talked about four cameras in these cruisers. I understand the DACE cam and the body cam. What are the other cameras used for?
I think, I think Chief Littleton signed off and so has.
He did. Basically, that's what they're talking about is personal wear cameras as well as the software and licensing for the use of the fleet cameras as well for the police cars.
Okay. Then that's, that's license plate detection for warrants or stolen vehicles or the like?
I believe Sergeant Hustler mentioned that.
Okay. All righty. That's, that was the only question I had. I do want to thank the trustees for bringing the township up to speed on all the requirements. And all the hours you guys have been putting in, it's just amazing what you know, changes you've made in such a short amount of time, and I want to thank everybody for that. I don't know if anybody ever realized how much time it was gonna take when they signed up for it, but it certainly shows, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Anybody else? Then at this time, I would like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Wen?
Yep.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody, and you know, feel free to give us a call if you have any questions.